It's free, but it's still great.
It's free, but it still costs.
Okay, welcome everybody. We'll get started here with the regular board meeting for St. Craig's Central School District, Monday, January twenty ninth. It's seven oh two. We'll get started, we call the meeting to order. I wanna thank everybody for being able to come tonight. Last week's weather was not very conducive to a meeting, so I appreciate everybody being flexible, so. Okay, roll call vote. Roll call, we'll have all members, with the exception of Mr. Lixit, are here tonight. Was the meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was.
Okay, we have an opportunity for public comment at this time. Do we have anybody out here that has signed up at all, Pam?
No.
Do we have any public comment at this time? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to our next item, which is our highlight on youth, which is our sixth grade reading theater with the middle school teacher Kirsten Holly, so, welcome.
As they worked their way in, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you sixth grade students from the middle school. These students have been working with Ms. Holly in what we call our win period at the end of the day, what I need for intervention in reading. Now, we had a wrestling meet tonight, we had a kid go home sick, so they're about four short. I think we had thirteen, right?
Yeah.
They went over to the elementary to do this one morning, which was pretty awesome because, you know, it's more empowering if they have an audience and so forth. But when these guys do this and you consider the fact that they would consider themselves struggling readers, this is going to be an awesome display. So, I'm gonna have these guys introduce themselves. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself and tell everybody who you are?
I'm Donna Ball.
I'm Noah Stranksy.
I'm Nicholas Forney.
I'm Trudy Gafford.
I'm Owen Howard.
I'm Hayden Wester.
I'm Alex Greenfield.
I'm Monty Morgan.
I'm Nicholas Stram.
Trudy, can you tell everybody what you are going to do?
So, we're doing Bob the Goofy right here, and this is the class, we've been working really hard on this, and we really hope you guys really enjoy it.
Whenever you're ready.
You've heard of Dasher and Dancer.
And you know the most famous reindeer of all.
But do you recall?
The Goofy Reindeer!
Wait a second, do you mean Bob?
Bob!
Who names a reindeer Bob?
Ho, 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 I named Bob Bob.
It's Santa!
Whoa there, this story isn't about Santa.
But Santa's in the story.
Well, yes, but the story's about Bob the Goofy Reindeer.
So tell us the story already!
Well, you see, Bob could never do anything right.
He scared of the blizzard, it's at Santa's toy shop.
And spill hot cocoa on Mrs. Claus's best dress.
But could he fly?
Of course he could fly!
Like a rocket ship!
Like a rocket ship!
Bob could fly so fast that he can see stars shooting from his toes.
Bob could fly so fast that he made a sonic boom a year in takeoff.
Bob could fly so fast that he disappeared into space for three days at a time.
Yes, Bob could fly fast.
That's awesome!
Well, you might think that.
Until it's time for Bob to land.
Took an entire year to repair Mrs. Claus's living room after last time Bob flew.
Let's not even mention what happened to Snow Mountain, or what's left of Snow Mountain.
You see, trouble didn't follow Bob.
Bob followed trouble.
Everywhere Bob went, trouble was sure to go!
But Bob wasn't a complete goofball.
Ho, 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 no hurry yet. I'll never forget how Bob saved Christmas back in forty-seven.
Bob saved Christmas!
He turned it, it was his best goofball ever.
You see, the biggest blizzard since the time we were off at North Pole.
On Christmas Eve, just as Santa's packing his sleigh and getting ready for takeoff,
an enormous northern wind blew through and narrowly blew down Santa's workshop.
Oh, no!
Oh, yes!
Elsa chasing gists that flew out of the sleigh.
The reindeer were so bogged down in snow that they couldn't get off the ground.
Mrs. Claus started to cry, "Christmas is ruined, Christmas is ruined!"
But Santa had a plan.
Ho, 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 I said, "Bob, with your flight discharge so strong, do you think you can blast my sleigh into the atmosphere?"
Oh, no!
Oh, yes!
Bob climbed onto Santa's sleigh in the deep down snow.
And Santa climbed into his sleigh, then Santa said,
"Now, Dasher, now Dancer, now Prancer, now Mixit, now Comet, now Keepit, now Dinosaur, now Blitzen, to the top of the sky, to the top of the stars, now blast away, blast away, Bob."
One, two, three, blast off!
While Bob performed his biggest blast off ever. Off and off and off he went, the Santa and his sleigh and eight tiny reindeer.
Then he disappeared.
Right off the head elf's radar!
All his loss cried Mrs. Claus.
What, wait!
What now?
Suddenly, in a millennial past midnight, head elves on Christmas Eve, you know, head elf detected a wonderful, beautiful-
Most delightful sight.
What?
What?
Present shooting down in the sky and into chimneys.
A rocking horse from Ch- for Tommy.
A dolly for Susie.
Hey, this is the twenty-first century!
An iPad for Donovan.
A cellphone for Courtney.
And diamondback V M M.
Oh, V A- Venom V M X bike for Shaw.
But what about Santa? And what about Bob?
Well, that was the strangest thing.
Santa landed in his comfy chair, complete with slippers and a pipe at the break of dawn.
Mrs. Claus cried, "It's a miracle."
And Santa's sleigh landed in the garage nowhere for the wear.
The head elf cried, "It's a miracle."
But what about Santa?
Ho, 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 we never heard from Bob again.
Oh, no!
Oh, yes!
But if you look up in the sky at night and see a shooting star-
That's just Bob.
Acting like a goofball.
That's Bob, Bria. Ho, 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 so you see, Bob is as happy as can be playing star hockey in the sky.
Every now and again, you can see him, like-
But most especially on Christmas Eve.
Merry Christmas to you all! And to all a good night!
Ho, 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 good night, Bob.
Yeah, so I asked Kirsten to share a little bit about what Reader's Workshop is, the purpose of workshop. But before she does, I'm gonna pick on you, Kate. Can you tell everybody here the purpose of winning, what types of things were you guys working on in win? What are you trying to improve?
Um, our stamina for reading.
What else, Owen?
Um, like, fluency.
Fluency, absolutely. So, if you could talk a little bit about that, that'd be awesome.
Yes, so, these guys have been, they worked on this for a six-week intervention with me, and they came into my intervention group based on some fluency scores. And in the span of six weeks, what we did is, we first of all started off reading for accuracy, like, trying to make sure we were reading with one hundred percent accuracy. So, we played a little accuracy game every day. And we did that for a couple of weeks, and then we moved on to this Reader's Theater script, and we worked on Christmas stories, and we read a couple of other Reader's Theater plays. But we settled on this one, and I invited, you know, Pete and Chance into watch it just as an audience for them, and it kinda went from there. And sort of what we were working on was trying to improve their reading rate, so that they were reading accurately at a rate that was quite a bit faster than what they had been before. And based on the data, these guys just did an amazing job. Some of their scores at the beginning, you know, were seventy-six words a minute, and by the end of the intervention, I had, a lot of them are in the one twenties to one forties. So, doing things like repeated reading, the choral reading, right, reading together, trying to read it expressive, expressively, and at a rate that's conversational together. We do things called echo reading, where like, I would model how to read something, and then they would read it, just trying to, you know, match that pace and that expression, so. I'm just extremely pleased, so they did a really awesome job. Way to go, guys, tonight.
Any questions by the board members for these guys? Believe me, there's a couple who will light you with their answers.
Are you having fun?
Yes.
Do you notice it working in other classrooms too, then? It helps you elsewhere, yeah?
What was, what was something easy in doing this Reader's Theater? And what was something that was difficult?
I have to say, the easiest thing was like, reading over it in your mind, because you don't really know how hard it is until you read it out loud. Cause I know, like, a lot of people just read it in their mind, and they don't practice to read out loud. So, yeah.
What was something that maybe was difficult?
Reading in front of people.
Reading in front of others, yeah.
Well, it's one of the hardest skills anybody can undertake, but it's a very valuable skill in life. Did an excellent job. Board thoroughly enjoys this. These acts and plays and get-togethers, so. Thank you for your hard work, and we really appreciate your efforts, and keep up the good work.
Yep, keep it up.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Excellent job.
Thank you, parents, for bringing them in tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Good night, guys. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, our comments from board members and superintendent. Start off with a report from those that attended the WASB State Convention in Milwaukee. Who wants to start out?
Once again, the, I always think that there's great learning opportunities from the convention. And what I found was, in the casual conversations that you have between the sessions, there's a lot of learning. But I do wanna call out, probably the biggest highlight for me was Dr. Bill Daggett, who is a lifelong educator, and he's written many of the models that we've used. Gave us all a good swift kick in the rear end, and commissioned us all at the same time. His basic message is, we've been educating our students to preserve the museums that we have built for an education system that's served a time gone by. And that, some of the stats he shared is, sixty-five percent of the jobs that exist today will not exist in ten years. Other jobs will exist, but not these. That if you can write an algorithm for the work, that work will go into automation. And they were showing just some phenomenal videos about that. And when he talked about rigor, relevance, and relationship, which is the method that we've done, we'll memorize a bunch of stuff, and then hope some of it means something to the students. And oh, by the way, if you have some time, sandwich in this non-cognitive work, he reversed that whole model. This is what we're gonna need, is actually more time spent on the non-cognitive, trustworthiness, perseverance, collaboration. The ten words that are in the circle at the high school and that we see around the middle school and elementary school. From that, you move into relevance. What matters to the kids, what matters to the students, where are they excited most? And when you reach them there, the rigor naturally follows. And boy, I didn't know if I wanted to get sick to my stomach or jump up and cheer, but it was, it was the whole gamut of emotions, and I'll certainly, Jeff Howard, too.
One thing Daggett talked about was, we all have smartphones. We don't let kids use smartphones because they might cheat or share with others. So, we're teaching them not to use available resources and not to collaborate with others. And it's like, you know, the sixth grade question was, name the first four presidents in the years that they served in office. I mean, two thousand people, they're not one person. Well, there was one social studies guy that knew the answer, but it was like, you could look it up. Why would I need to memorize that? You know, cause that's on the sixth grade test.
And the one that really shocked me, since I'm reading here, six billion of the seven people, seven billion people on earth have a smartphone, have a mobile phone. Six billion of the seven, more than have toilets, access to toilets.
Isn't that unreal?
And I remember it was him arriving that-
Third world nations have them, but they don't have plumbing.
The first person on earth who will live to a hundred and fifty already has been born.
There's, yeah, nanotechnology, it's the-
Bio nanotechnology.
Consistency agelo that they can inject into your bloodstream that will seek out radical growing cells and repair them.
So, Daggett is studying what he thinks are the, was it twenty-five highest achieving schools, and it was innovation at a lower cost. Those were, that was the measure.
And none of them were a top ten school. The innovation came from changing the model and growing from an old status quo to something radically different. It was amazing. So, that's, I'm just gonna leave my note there. That was, that was the conference for me, right there.
The two takeaways for me were, the Oregon School District, and I picked up one of their annual reports, where they have a, they call it the four Cs of character, culture, community, and competency. And each of their buildings has a goal related to those. So, for an elementary school, the competency goal is one hundred of grade levels. One through four will achieve a median SPG of fifty or greater as measured by the Star Reading Assessment. Another elementary had, that everybody would move at least one-
At grade level or one equivalent.
Grade learners read at a grade level or made one year of progress in one year of time. Character is that eighty-eight percent of parents, this is one school's goal, eighty-eight percent of parents reported that they felt other learners showed respect to their children. Culture was safety in this school. Students feel safe at school, report ninety-six percent of parents, parents, students, and staff reported that students felt safe at school. I just thought this, and then they, they drive this through everything they do. And they have metrics that they're looking at, weekly, monthly, quarterly. I thought it was really pretty cool. The other one, and I missed, I missed the workshop, but it was on personalized learning plans, where they had a format that every kid in the school has a personalized learning plan, created by the student, and I just saw the tail end of it in the teacher that was facilitating it. Said, "You might think that this causes, this is done so we teachers know the kids better." And he said, "Really, this is done so the student knows themselves better." And they were all very student-driven, they each have a learning coach that they interact with on a certain time. It's all in writing, the kids know, the parents know. It was really pretty awesome. And, so I picked up a book that they use to support that. And then, this Oregon School District, and I bought the book, but haven't started reading it, their board did a book study that was five levers of building learners or something like that.
Jim Rickavon.
Yeah. It was really, really good stuff.
You picked it up, right, that book?
I bought that book as well. And then our governor took credit for all advancements in public education over the last five years. Yeah, eight years.
I'd like to go back to Daggett for one moment, you know. Kurt, you gave such a great rubric on how we can think about those different models and how they fit into one, two, three, and four. In the Daggett, it was five levels, which basically started, level one is, what are you talking about? Level two was, I've memorized something. Level three is, I can actually recall it. But it was really getting into the four and five that made a difference. It was about applying learning to complex situations that are known. That was level four, and level five-
First one was applying it to the same area, same discipline.
Same expertise. And then this, but the level five was, complex areas and different areas that are unknown.
Unpredictable.
Unpredict, and so, you know, I'd suggest that we look at that too, because it was another way of saying, how do you move from learning to applying, and really, and this Oregon school just started a capstone program. About forty-five hundred students in the district. Thirty of their seniors raised their hand to do a capstone. And in this capstone, it was really around why I'm ready to move on beyond my secondary edu- you know, my secondary education out into life. And taking all that they had learned over those thirteen years. And there was a couple of board members, a couple of community members, business person, a superintendent sat in on them, and they said, you know, this, I was talking with one of the board members, he said, "I'm just sitting there, almost in tears, listening to students and the passion they have about what they have and what they wanna bring out into their world." So, I think that there's some, there were really great ideas at that Oregon school. And then the Daggett model, I'd love for you to see that as well.
The other thing that Oregon talked about was their compensation system, that I thought ours was far better. They basically had three pay slots, so you didn't get a raise for five years, and then you'd get a raise, but you only got a raise if you met these certain criteria. And I thought ours was much, a much better system. I think we could start helping, making sure that it gets applied in the classroom, demonstrated the application in the classroom. But it was, it was great, I was really glad that I went.
I guess the, one of the sessions I went to was listening to a presentation from the administrators of the Muskego, Norway School District, which is on the south end of Milwaukee. Caught my interest there because they were looking at aligning what they're trying to learn with the curriculum that's being taught, and the state standards that are being put out there. They are an excellent school district, one of the top school districts in the state. One of their awards they won was the Baldridge Quality Award, which is a significant award for any industry and organization who is looking to achieve a quality program. I myself am a little skeptical of it, because I'm a little skeptical on any quality program that misspells a poor guy's name for the first three years of the award, so. But they focused very much on building the roots for the education, which was looking at curriculum, professional development, educator effectiveness. Keep your focus on the vision that you're trying to achieve. If you've developed a good vision and a good mission, keep your eye on the goal, and don't be distracted by a lot of outside influences. They had some new state standards that came out. They are looking at the state standards as they change. But one of the things they stated is, you can't teach everything in the state standards, as they put them out there, because there are dozens and dozens of standards. You take the essential standards in those guidelines, and those are the ones that you focus on. And if they do not, they felt if they do not align with the vision and the mission you're trying to achieve in your school district, then they would ignore them. If they didn't feel they were important. Keep aligning, and keep focusing on their end goal. So, I thought it was a pretty good program. I think it's something that we should keep an eye on, because they are a high-achieving district. I think their state report card scored for the school is eighty-seven point one, I believe. That's a pretty good score on the state report card, so. And they're also listed in U S News and World Reports as one of the best-based schools in the country, so. It was very good. Sat through a couple of roundtables with some other board members from across the state. It's always enlightening to discuss issues with other boards, and try and exchange ideas, addressing issues that they have, or listening to things that they have done that would fit in what we're doing.
At one of those roundtables, a woman, I can't remember what district it was, she was the only board member that didn't have a spouse who worked in the district. It's like, holy cow! It was, there were like, so many conflicts of interest on every issue.
Now, we had one, a lot of these board members that I had on our, on our table were, had been on the board for a while. One was recently elected as their board president. They're struggling to hold their quorum together because they have a five-member board. They're trying to influence it to increase it to seven, because they have several. They have one that is older and likes to take long vacations through the winter, and then they have a couple that have been out sick or traveling on the road, so then they're struggling to even get a quorum together. So, they were wondering what suggestions we might have there. We discussed some issues with athletic codes, such at one meeting with some board members. We had one new board member. She had just stepped in to fill a vacancy on their board. She, her neighbor talked her into taking it, and she's an attorney by trade. She's like, two or three months into the job, and she's still learning an awful lot, so. It was another good convention, a lot to be learned, a lot of exchanges. Did run into our newly-elected state senator. She had to come up and introduce herself to us as I spotted her. She spotted me in the bookstore, so she had to run over and say hello. I've known Patty, you know, for twenty-five plus years, so. It was good to see her, introduced her to Tim, I think Tim's ever met her before. She has a character, so. Wish her well in her future endeavors, and I'm sure we'll have her here, on the board here later in the year, so. There's any more? Any comments, Tim?
Yeah, one of the, you guys already talked about the big highlights, of course. One of the things I sent out was a panel of all the teachers of the year, and Owen took notes on some of their comments. I believe all children can learn, I believe children learn at different rates. She believes in the growth mindset, and personalized learning, personalized learning is very tough, but worth it. These child's at a different level. One is not traditional. Just started tutoring kids at a later age and loved it. Got a teaching, always teacher of the year. Another one talked about a thing that we talk about a lot, and that's leadership. Leadership is the future of our youth and should be part of our curriculum, is what he thought. And then, I know one of the speakers, Robbie, said that education is what remains after forgetting everything one has learned.
That is an Einstein quote.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and again, it just kind of reinforces the problem-solving skills and more of the soft skills, like Dr. Daggett had talked about. And then, other things I know, I not mentioned in Dr. Daggett's presentation by Jeff Howard or John, talked about the jobs are changing a little bit, talking about the future. The middle skilled jobs are shrinking, more high-skilled jobs and more low-skilled jobs are kind of meeting in the middle and shrinking out the high-skilled jobs. And then talked about just, yeah, your major matters a lot in college. He talked about picking, right, there are a lot of two-year degrees whose salaries far exceed four-year degrees, but a certain four-year degree still are obviously higher paying, when just looking at salary alone, obviously, and that's obviously not the only consideration. And then just with, he talked about the different industrial revolutions, and you know, the technology revolution is multiplying fast, a lot quicker, and- And, um, you know, in two thousand and seven, it was ExxonMobil, General Electric, Microsoft, Citigroup, Bank of America, five largest companies. Ten years later, Apple, Google, Microsoft, Amazon, Facebook. Obviously, all, uh, have something in common there. Microsoft's the only one that remain. And then the future, it's going to be bio, nano, and information technology. They're going to be the five largest companies. And largest companies are going to struggle because of technology. They can't keep up. Technology is increasing so fast that they won't be able to keep up. It's the smaller companies, um, and entrepreneurs, startup, startups, entrepreneurial folks, um, that are, are going to actually do better in the global economy. But then again, his big aha is just it reinforced how archaic our education system is and we have to be forward-thinking and, and think outside the box and try to be on the leading edge of things. And I, I, you know, couldn't help about, think about, um, standards-based grading and those types of initiatives, um, that are foreign to people, um, but, you know, so was the light bulb at one point, too, you know. So I like that we're forward-thinking and, uh, preparing our students for what's next.
I guess one thing that, uh, another take that I got from, um, Mesquiko Norway was the, um, they're reinforcing the, uh, the alignment and, uh, focus on the vision. They referred to, um, a little bit of the initiatives of looking at initiative fatigue. Uh, they've, they've had so many new initiatives started that, uh, people are just worn out trying to implement all these new things. So it's important to keep your focus, stay aligned with your end goal, so. It was a pretty interesting talk. They've, they've spent a lot of time on professional development over, they said, over a hundred and sixty hours of professional development over three years. So it isn't just a one-year effort, but a whole year, so. But all in all, it was a pretty, uh, another good, uh, convention, so. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is setting a date for the next committee meeting, uh, to discuss the, uh, standards-based grading and reporting. So, who wants to start with that? So, administration has a recommendation?
We do. For my notes. March twentieth, does that sound right, you guys? Is it going to be a recommendation a Tuesday?
Is that between sports schedules?
It is, and that's why, between sports seasons and staying away from religious activity, education on Wednesdays, board meetings on Mondays. Tuesday, March twentieth, I believe, six P M. And the auditorium is going to be our recommendation.
Okay, I know there were some, there was some feedback by some parents that they thought six P M. was a little early. I know we're trying to sandwich it in, uh, between those that, uh, have trouble getting there from work in the Twin Cities and those that don't want to be out too late on their kids, so. I don't know if there's any feeling there of shifting it to maybe six-thirty?
Yeah, I mean, we're flexible in time, we were more focused on the date.
Be more friendly to people that work till five and try to get home and then back out, so.
Move to six-thirty?
March twentieth.
I will send a note by that.
Yes.
Is that the auditorium again?
Yes.
And what's the status of the compilation? Feedback, concerns, questions from the first meeting? Have we published?
Uh, we have not. We've compiled it, we've discussed it at great length. Well, we could certainly publish that, right?
I think we need to, to have informed questions for the next round.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else that we need to address with regards to that? I will point out also, uh, with the meeting that we had in May, we took the survey. We've had trouble getting the survey results, uh, entered sorted, um, to focus and get some feedback. I do have all the informations put into a Google spreadsheet now. I think the thing that I'm looking at for help now is trying to get the data sorted. Major concerns, those that, uh, put the information or enter the surveys information for us.
How many lines are you talking about?
We're talking probably forty or fifty lines. Probably a dozen, dozen or more columns, probably two, dozen and a half columns.
Send it over to me and I'll just take a look at, uh, filter search.
Okay.
See if there's anything that jumps.
Okay. Okay, I, I can do that. If you'd like, I could share it with the board. It's on, uh, it should be in Google Drive, I'd share it with you too. So, just a matter of having you share it against us. So if I can get help on that, that would be helpful. Okay, is there anything else, uh, from board members or superintendent comments? If you're hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, presentation from tech ed teacher, Mr. Garrett Wenzel, regards to the construction academy at the high school, so. Long we are.
There.
Should adjust the microphone.
Yeah, I got a handout.
Oh, can, here, you want to log in line?
Would you, uh, replace that microphone? Well, that's just a thing to participate.
I can?
It's on the agenda, it says.
Okay, all right. I don't have a cord here.
I D. cord?
Okay, I think we're all set. Um, so I, I guess I'll give a quick presentation here on, uh, this update about Panther Construction. Um, we kind of just talked about that and I know, um, you know, we have a few things to kind of see what led up to this. We'll talk about, uh, kind of currently what, what's happening in Panther Construction and then, uh, we'll start looking at the future a little bit here as well. Tim, if you could do some next slide, thank you. Um, so, so last year, uh, Tim kind of came up with his, his vision about a lot of different, uh, student-run businesses. Um, and, and one of them being, uh, Panther Construction. Um, so, so we kind of, you know, spent a lot of time last year looking at what is that going to look like at St. Craig Central? You know, what can we feasibly do here? Um, so, you know, we, we took some time, looked at different schools, saw other schools that, you know, there are a few schools in the area and spread out to Wisconsin that will build up. A full-size house, which is, is quite an endeavor to take on, you know, especially with a group of students. So, so, you know, that's, that's one of the things we kind of looked at and it's pretty risky to invest a lot of money in a house and then who knows themselves, you know, what happens with it. So, so we looked at a few other options, trying to, try to see what other, um, schools are doing for their construction programs. And then, uh, we actually, uh, linked up with WITC, which, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. Um, but, but what we could do with them. And then, um, we also looked at, I guess, kind of the, the needs for the area. You know, you look at St. Craig County, um, and, and there, there really aren't any, um, construction educational facilities around. WITC doesn't operate and their closest thing is Rice Lake. Um, there is CBT C and, and River Falls that has that, that I think we've heard in Pierce County. So, so we really don't have a good solid, um, construction education program to get kids into the industry. So I think that's where we lose a lot of kids, um, going into that industry because they don't really know how to get into it because there's nothing local to, to really lead them into it. Um, so, so we kind of, you know, looked at all that. We ended up, you know, we'll, we'll be partnering with WITC next year, which I'll, I'll talk about here in a minute. Um, currently, though, um, we, we run, uh, a Building Trades One class, we run a Building Trades Two class, um, and that's what we're doing this year right now. Um, Building Trades One is, is very much kind of your traditional construction class, a very teacher-led. Um, I actually team-teached that with, uh, Dory Grimer, another teacher. So it, it works that, you know, we have kids spread out all over the place, so we kind of needed two teachers for that class. This wall, we ended up kind of leading the students through, through, uh, making these hunting lines just to provide them with a good solid foundation of, you know, how to use different power tools, how to use different hand tools in construction. Um, we're starting to bring that business model then, uh, we're building these hunting lines and selling them. Um, so it, it was a good experience for them to kind of get them started. Now, now that we're in second semester, we, we got Building Trades Two. Um, and this one is actually kind of giving me a, a whole different look because it is very good to be a business model. We, we've been kind of working first semester, trying to connect with them, some people in the community to see what kind of small, uh, construction projects that they might need and, and try to work with, you know, even within the school, of, of what kind of things we could have our class build. And now we broke the class up into very small groups and each group has their construction project. It, it is a business. They take it from the design phase, they estimate, they figure out the cost of materials, they're sending out, you know, uh, proposals or estimates to, to their customers. Um, and then hopefully here in a, a few weeks, we'll actually start building all their projects. Um, we have the kids broken up. We have one group taking on a, a shed right now. Um, we have another group that they're going to be building a brick pizza oven for, uh, Panther Pizza here in spring. Um, another group is pricing out a, a second hunting line and somebody willing to custom make one. Um, and then we got a few other little projects, just like a chicken coop and things like that. But it's really interesting to see that, you know, I'm, I'm kind of the middle man now where I'm, I'm kind of contacting, you know, people in the community, trying to make sure that I'm connecting them and my students, um, what, you know, what their final project's going to look like and, and kind of things like that. So it's, it's been a very interesting look that I am more so mentoring kids now through this whole process rather than me just giving them information or telling them how to do different things. As far as, as far as the future here now, um, if we, if we look for, forward to next year, uh, like I said, we've been starting to talk with WITC to see what we could do there. Um, and they offer a construction academy. Currently, uh, Clayton High School, it has implemented this. Um, they're in their second year of this construction academy. Um, and it is three different courses. It's, it's a construction premium one course, it's a math three fifty-five course, and then it's a, a print reading course, uh, for building construction. So fortunately, I qualified, uh, to teach, uh, construction premium one and, and print reading. And then, uh, Carolyn Lent is going to be teaching our, our math three fifty-five course, uh, at the high school there. Um, and it's, it's going to be awesome, I think. It's, it's providing, it's taken our whole business model with Panther Construction and bringing it to the next level because now my kids are getting college credit for all these classes. Um, so that, so out of all these three classes here that are going to earn you nine college credits and then they also earn a technical diploma, uh, for going through this program. Um, as far as implementing this program, we are still kind of working on some logistics, whether, you know, that, you know, um, if there's semester-long classes, year-long and, you know, if it's a junior level, senior level, things like that. But, but those are just minor details that I'm kind of working out, um, before next year's. So, um, if we look at, the next slide please, Tim. Um, and basically, what I'm trying to sell the kids here is you, you have to realize that the, the construction industry is growing, especially in this area. It is projected, uh, according to the St. Craig Economic Profile, that's going to have about twenty-two percent growth rate through twenty twenty, I believe. Um, that there are, are a shortage, an extreme shortage of many people in the steel trades, um, right now. And I'm talking to, to Chippewa Valley Tech College and their construction program there. It's about every four people leaving construction through retirement or whatever reason. They're only getting one person back going into it. So, so it's, it's pretty challenging then for, uh, to find any good help there. Um, so I'm, you know, really sorry to the, the students that, really, you're going to need great skills for life, even if you don't go into construction, hopefully you're all over or someday you have to be able to maintain your house and this is going to be beneficial to you. Um, the other thing that I really try to sell is have a backup plan, you know? In reality, not everyone's going to make it through a four-year college, you know? And this is a great opportunity, you know, for students to get a, a free college of, you know, education in high school. And they don't have to go anywhere. It's all at the high school, which is really nice, you know, compared to youth options or things like that. So they're not missing out on that whole high school experience yet. As far as, uh, what we're working on next is, this, this program, I, I really hope we can grow it. It, it's going to be a lot of work. It's going to be a lot of community involvement, whether it's not just necessarily, uh, work, talking to the community and seeing, um, what, what projects we can make for them, but it's trying to get more community members into the shop areas, whether volunteering and helping out and guiding the students, um, or coming in, giving presentations about construction or different steel trades and things like that. Um, or even honestly donations, financial support to, to get this program up to where it needs to be because there are going to be some big hurdles with it. You know, looking at, you know, tho- those items, I think they're all going to be doable and we're going to work with what we got right now. Um, and I think going into the future, it's just going to be awesome. Hopefully, this is just the tip of the iceberg, what we can really accomplish here with this program. Um, it's going to, you know, hopefully grow into, into something just very unique, very awesome for this area. Um, so I gave everybody, or Mr. Cooney handed out everybody a flyer, um, and just kind of a quick overview of the construction academy, uh, what classes entails. And then we're also very official about them, business cards. Um, so if you need any extras, to hand up a pen and supplies, just let me know. Um, but truly, the, the one thing I want to, you know, and I, I always do a bad job at this, is always taking that moment, slowing down and showing my gratitude because honestly, it's, it's great that we are able to, to, um, I guess, provide, even with taking some of these risks, uh, to provide, you know, students some of these great opportunities. I, I think this has just been an awesome school district to work with. I, you know, I need the school board for, for their leadership and then all the administrators. You know, it, it, it truly is a, a great thing that I, I think that we're not afraid to take risks. And if we do fail, we usually fail forward, um, so it's, it's been a, a great thing here. So I, I think this is just going to keep on growing, just been awesome. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah. How is, how is?
Sorry, I got a race here.
No, I, I, I think the construction skills is a, is a critical area. I've done some remodeling in my own home lately. One of the hardest things people are having trouble finding are people with carpentry skills that'll come in and do small projects. Uh, everybody wants to build a house or build a, a business or something like that. Nobody will come in and do a, a small remodeling job. They're, they're almost impossible to find.
It's just because they're so busy. I'm talking to, um, one of the, had a Meyer Construction High School. One of the most interesting things I heard is the Prescott High School. They had to bring in masons, bricklayers from nine different steaks for that one project. And that wasn't that big of a project.
I guess the other.
Shows the shortage there.
I know we're getting our feet wet, but I guess the next question I would have is, we're looking at carpentry skills. Are we looking in the future, uh, at plumbing, heating, HVAC type, uh, skills?
Potentially, yes, and, and in, um.
Do we need connections?
As we, yes, we could always use connections. Um, if we keep on following with WITC, they focus mainly on the framing as your foundation, and then that's gonna lead into other areas as well. Um, but, right now, in, in my Building Trades Two class, I do have a plan for, for some smaller units on residential wiring, drywall, plumb, and things like that.
Okay. Okay, what was your enrollment in the fall semester, number of kids?
We had, um, about a dozen in Building Trades One, and it's about to save in Building Trades Two. Um, but now that we're offering so much more to, I think it's just such a benefit to the students that, that we're gonna continue to see those numbers rise.
Yeah, I think it's an important, uh, skill to learn. Not only, uh, they provide good, good paying jobs and benefits, but, uh, you know, not everybody is interested in going to college, and this is a good way to provide a living for your family. There is a high demand for it out there right now. And I would, going back to the day, I had talked, and they were talking about some of the jobs that are going away. You know, you mentioned how hard it was to find, uh, masons to lay up houses. They were showing where they're, they're pouring walls now, uh, with robots.
Yep, and, and basically giant 3D printer.
3D printer, yeah. And so, 3D printers were working there, robotics, uh, auto industry, I think the one they said, uh, had two hundred and fifty or three hundred robots in a plant, and they could turn out a new car every fifty-seven seconds, I think it was. So, it's, it's amazing, um, what the automation can do, but you're gonna have to have somebody be able to program that stuff. And, uh, those are gonna be critical jobs too, so.
Yep, and I, I think, going a little off topic here, what, going back to John's, uh, comment about six, sixty-five percent jobs in ten years don't exist? And the bigger question is, who's gonna create those jobs? You know, and you gotta realize, it's, it's our kids, it's our students. Tim mentioned, talking about a little bit of entrepreneurship being big competitors of, of some of the bigger businesses. If, if you start, um, a great podcast to listen to is, it's called Start Ed Up. It's, it's basically merging education and entrepreneurship together. Uh, it's, it's a really, it's a Start Ed Up, it's all one word. Um, it's, uh, Don Wett, Wett, that puts it on, he was a teacher from Indiana, and he does some very innovative things with his students. Um, he has an old, old, basically, innovation class, but I could go way down to that, but I don't wanna get too far off task.
But, uh, you know, Howard, you can't just go out and 3D print a house without understanding structure, engineering, stress, conditions, all of those things.
Those are high skilled.
So, you, you, you know, it's almost, you know, there's some things that you have to almost learn it by hand first, understand what, what's in it, or then you get into the engineering piece of it, then you can get into automation, you just can't.
You run into the other problem too, is everybody is so focused on building the new, who is gonna fix the old.
No, we're gonna tear it all down and put it in a landfill somewhere, sustainability. Um, are you working with any, um, area, um, trades companies where, are we students, then we can let them know? You know, I think about the number of summer jobs, and then, do you get someone back for like a Building Three or Building Four somewhere down the road? So, you, you do some, you get your basic technical, then you can go out and get some application, and actually come back and do even more with it.
Yep, and I'm starting to work, um, on presentations in the past of the St. Craig Valley Home Builders Association, so, so I got quite a few businesses I need to reach out. And that's kinda one, as we implement this whole construction academy, give, you know, kids opportunity or their technical diploma, that's the end result, is I'd love to see at least a guaranteed summer job from a local construction company, which is very feasible with the demand, everything.
And they're telling you what they needed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe it's flipped the script a little bit, instead of reaching out to their members at whose cards you got, we start giving our cards to St. Craig Valley builders, and they start going to them to find our people. You know, it, it might not be immediate, but at some point, you're gonna create a program that's more in demand, and instead of you beating the pavement, you should be answering the door.
Absolutely, that's a great, great point.
Okay, any other questions for Garrett?
Certainly think it's something that we can't lose focus on, because, I mean, even without that push to a bachelor's, you know, I think my nephew said it really well, I pre-graduated high school. He said, "I don't wanna make spreadsheets, I wanna make houses." You know, there's something to be said, especially for some of these kids that are really attracted to a program like this, is they just wanna make something.
The tangible.
Whether you could walk into it, whether you could hold it in your hand, they wanna make or build something. And it doesn't always lead to, okay, I've, I've done this, I've, I've swung a hammer for fifteen years, and I wanna jump up to the next level, and I wanna engineer some of this stuff. Some of these people just, they just wanna build stuff for their entire life, that's all they wanna do. And I think this is a really good opportunity for these kids to try it out, and make sure this is definitely what they wanna do, and it, the more programs that we've got like this, it gives them just a wider variety, especially to, to try that stuff out, because, you know, as you said, Howard, not, not everybody is a bachelor's degree material, not everybody wants to be.
Well, I think they're all gonna be bachelor degree material, it's whether they want.
Well, I think some people are definitely capable.
If they don't have the interest, then they shouldn't waste the time.
Yeah, the bachelor's, the master's route, there's a lot of people, I think, that could do that, that feel like it's a waste of their time and their interest. It's not that they couldn't do it, it's that they just don't want to do it, they wanna do something outside of that realm. You know, definitely, with, with, you know, courses like this, and what you're doing to reach out to solid businesses in the community too, it keeps that, it keeps those roots out there, growing out, to make sure the feelers are out there, keep kids interested, especially in some of the local businesses and what.
Yeah, I, I don't want this to be a school program that I run, it adds to a community, because I wanna go bigger with it.
It's definitely going in a good direction, I think.
One more component that the, that the students can look at is, a lot of times, uh, you're looking for a second job, or a way to make a little extra money, or something like that, and the small projects, like Howard says, that you can't find someone to do. So this is a nice, a weekend side gig for people, and, you know, it, it doesn't even have to be their first job. If they have the skills, they can make it their fun money job, which everyone seems to end up looking for at some point in their life.
Absolutely.
Interesting. Any other questions or comments? Sounds like an exciting program, Garrett.
That's right.
Yeah, keep it up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing, is there anything that we aren't doing that would,
Help you do that.
That would get you to the next level?
It's okay, we asked the question.
Oh, neat space. Definitely working outside in the middle of winter with a group of high schoolers.
Build yourself a shed.
That's, that's, that's funny for materials.
Bring us an estimate.
So, so yeah, that'd be, you know, and just honestly getting word out, making sure that we are, are bringing in any community aspects we can. Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Garrett. Uh, then we'll move on to the next item, we have a report on a new middle school playground plan by the middle school volunteer program.
I'm just gonna quickly introduce these two young ladies, even though you may have known them. Um, but to my left is Sarah Pomerini, who's been working at the middle school quite a few years as a, as an aide. And DeeDee Cox, who, I'm not sure if a lot of you know, but speaking of builders.
Oh, yeah.
Her husband's a builder, um, in the area, and, uh, has construction business. Um, DeeDee, I've had the, a pleasure of working with DeeDee for the last few years as a very, um, active volunteer with the parent Panther group, Panther parent group at the elementary. She's a parent at the middle school, and now is kind of, um, working with Sarah, trying to build a, a parent group that's more active and similar to what they were doing at the elementary. Um, and it's kinda funny, because we kinda had a similar dream as when I got to middle school and I looked around in regards to a play area for our kids, we really don't have anything, while all of a sudden, I realized that, uh, they had a very similar dream. So, I wish I could take credit for all this, but all this has been work that DeeDee and Sarah have been doing, so, I'm just gonna introduce them and get them out of the way, because they deserve all the credit for this, so, they're all yours.
All right, how do we get this up there?
Can.
Is, oh, that's not what's.
Hit the magic button.
Magic button.
All up and down. Which, which one is that up top?
Oh, I thought this was the playground.
That's not it? Yeah, that's not what's on your computer.
Right now, we made it out of snow, that's, the kids are, the kids are disowned that.
The Ham and Himalayas?
Yeah, exactly, the Ham and Himalayas.
Oh, it'd be your display, are you, do you have a dual display?
Yeah.
You'd right-click.
Oh, there you go.
There it is.
All right, well, like Pete said, I'm DeeDee, and this is Sarah. Um, I've only been working at the middle school for about two years now, it's almost exactly two years, but it feels like a lot longer than that. Um, I've been, I have a second grader and a fifth grader. And I would say that when, the very first time I probably pulled up to the middle school, I'd say five years ago, we live on the Robert side of town, so we did a lot at the elementary. Um, I looked at the playground equipment, if you can really call it that, and went, that's what we have? That's it? It's just a set of monkey bars, and it doesn't, it's pretty neglected. And so, um, Sarah's been head of the MVP program at the middle school for a few years now. And I'm kind of coming off of the PPG at the elementary, um, and looking at how we could kind of make those two parent groups, um, act more streamlined a little bit. Um, we have a lot of great, a great group of parents coming with fourth, fifth graders right now, that are very active. And a lot of times that participation just kinda stops right at the middle school level, like, we just assume our kids don't want us there, or, you know, we're not gonna step foot in that school as much. So Sarah's been, you know, the past few years, she sends out a sheet saying, you know, if you wanna come help, volunteer, come on a field trip, here's some opportunities, and she hasn't got a great response. Um, and I thought, you know what, we have a great group of parents that wanna help, that kinda just need somebody to say, here, this is what we need you to do, can you come in and do it? And they're like, yeah, yeah, we're all on board. So, we kinda went in with the main focus, this year at least, of a playground, and what that entails, and what you need to do to make that happen, how much it costs. Um, so I started with Pete, he's the guy, um, the playground company is on there, Minnesota Wisconsin Playground, on this picture, um, and did the one over at the elementary. So, money is obviously the biggest thing, it was a shocker to me, but as I researched things, and we talked about things, and what we want the students to have, um, kinda narrowed it down, narrowed it down, definitely learned a lot from this process. So, we'll just kinda go through the stuff that we've chosen, why we've chosen it, how much it's all gonna cost. So there's, uh, this is just a main climbing structure. We originally had, um, a slide in there, and the design came back to us, and we went, that looks like an elementary school. That doesn't look like a middle school playground. Brought it to the student council, they gave some feedback, they said, we want somewhere to climb, we just want something to climb on, we don't need a slide. That's the other, the other tricky part is too, is having fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. Fifth and sixth, they, they're totally pumped about this, seventh and eighth are like, we're not gonna use that that much longer. But, I think there's parts of it that you can use at any age, the swings, I'd still go on a swing. So, we chose stuff based on feedback from the kids. Um, this kind of stuff, this nest swing, that blue, that blue one, um, certainly, uh, for kids with disabilities, the one with the harness, another thing that would help our kids with disabilities, um, and then, you know, regular swings.
The one thing with this playground that we focused, we wanted everybody to be able to use it, whether, um, especially with the TDS kids, they're trying to make it as easy and accessible for everyone to play with, so, we took that into huge consideration.
And right now, so, I, I guess placement too, this would go, this playground will go right off of the basketball court. The, where the monkey bars are right now, we've had the guy come out and say, you know, where would you recommend? He said, you can't really put anything where your existing thing is, with, there's like a drainage ditch that goes down there, you, it's not a good spot. Um, your, our only option is right off the basketball court, which would also make it wheelchair accessible right off that court, so, um, this is quite the.
Yes.
What was that?
East corner.
East.
North.
Yeah, the north, yeah, north. But it's not a huge space, um, and I also do bus duty after school, so I see the need for some more of this, we're gonna talk about fencing and stuff too, but, um, not a lot of space, but I think we can better utilize it to reach all of our students' needs. Um, though, that little girl sitting on that little chair, that's just those little spinny chairs, um, uh, children with disabilities can go on that blue thing. Um, when we brought this to student council, they came back and said, we want more benches and tables out there, we really like a place to sit. So we have a couple, um, picnic tables out there, but they're wood, they're kinda falling apart, I, they're not super nice to sit at. Um, so I guess, and then one of these is a, a ADA accessible table there. Um, just to kinda encourage the kids, if you have a choice to stay inside or go outside, go outside. You know, you don't have to be running around, but just enjoy the outdoors a little bit, you know, instead of sitting looking at your Chromebooks.
There's a lot of kids that just like to sit around the tables and talk with their friends and stuff, and so, having those tables and stuff outside will encourage them to get fresh air.
Yeah, exactly. Um, the total cost, we went with Uline, this is just a bid that we pulled off online, it's about four thousand dollars for two, two regular tables, one ADA table, and I think it was three benches. Uh, Gaga pits, this is another thing that is super popular, I'm not sure if everybody knows this game, but it's a, that's all it is, right there, with a ball. Um, but it's very, you can include a lot of kids at the same time, and it's, I wouldn't say it's super fast-paced, but you're, you don't just end and then everybody has to wait. You're kind of all involved, this one has like a little bench that goes around the top. Um, my husband is a cub master in the district, so with partnering with the Boy Scouts, we hope to have them do a service project for this, and it sounds like we're closer to getting there. We don't have anybody in the district right now that's ready for like an Eagle Scout project, but we're thinking as, as a group, they could make one or two of these. And research a little bit, like the flooring, so it's not a gigantic mud pit, and I, I can't come up with anything better than wood chips, and I don't just kinda keep replacing those throughout the years, but, um, yeah, my husband kinda gave us a bid on that, like how much the wood would cost, sand, yeah.
Sand and, sand and P rock.
Something that you, I guess you wouldn't wanna drag into the gym, 'cause that's right, where they have to lock that in. Um, as doing bus duty, fencing, I don't necessarily love the look of it, but I see it as a safety thing for sure. I mean, it is just, it's, it's scary, like it's, you know, you almost forget that you're in a, on school property, because you feel like you're just in the neighborhood playing around, but, um, balls rolling out there, some of the fifth graders that aren't quite used to how everything goes at the middle school quite yet, just kinda running right out, you know? And I'm like, oh, okay, and that's a very busy, you know, you, you're all aware of that, it's where everybody is, you know, picking up and dropping off every day, so. We talked to Gary Holler from State Line Fence, um, and he gave us a bid of ten thousand five hundred dollars for that, but he made it very well-known that that price will increase, um, because of the price of steel right now. So, we have been working pretty hard to try to get some funds built up for this. Uh, we started with an Art to Remember, which has, is a program that, um, they've done over at the elementary, and that's raised a lot of money. The kids create a piece of artwork, and then we send it in, and then they can purchase things with their artwork on it for Christmas, whatever, so we've done that. We've sold some spiritware. Um, we attempted concession sale, sales at the middle school for a forensics event, we pretty much broke even on that, but it was a very good learning experience. We recently had a meat raffle at Parkside, um, Dusty Anderson has been very supportive of anything. We've said, you know, hey, we wanna do this, he's, he's on board for whatever. Uh, meat raffle didn't go so well, there was a lot of events going on in the, in the town that night. Um, the burger night was his best that he's ever had, so we had a really, really good turnout for that, so we probably. The burger night was his best that he's ever had, so we had a really, really good turnout for that, so we'd probably do that again in the spring once the kids nice. We raised about seventeen hundred dollars that night. Box tops, we are constantly cutting box tops because Mrs. Wazley at the middle school has a connection through her family that she donates a bunch of box tops, and we'll send those in. And we have a boosters on fun run coming up in February. It's about a ten day program, pumping up the kids, saying this is what we're raising money for. The company tells us you can raise about twenty grand, so we'll see, we're a little skeptical, but I think the kids are really gonna like it, but it's a, they tie in character education, it's not just a gimmicky program, you know, they tie in the stuff that we talk about every day. But, in our MVP account, we have about seven thousand dollars that will go towards this. Up until this point, we, I obviously know that we can't just, you know, fork out a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for a playground, so I wrote a grant, the Otto Bremer Trust Grant, I won't find out until May if we are awarded that, so we're gonna pretend like we don't have that money and keep fundraising. I also applied for a WA Trust grant recently, and there's a couple more that we could apply for before March first. So, the big cost, why that hundred sixty-three thousand dollar price tag, about half of that is this ported place rubber. So that would be the surfacing that would be most accessible to everybody. Lasts about twenty years, definitely a big upfront cost, but it lasts a long time. Your other option would be the wood chips, and it's messy, I, when I think about kiddos, I have a special ed para specifically, I guess, when I think about kiddos that have a walker, or a wheelchair, or crutches, or even somebody in the community with a stroller, wood chips is just not ideal, it's messy, it's gonna, it's gonna be dragged into the school, it's not easily, can't, you know, roll over it as easily. And we will have to keep replacing that as, you know, it, over the years. So, if the playground equipment with that rubber surfacing, the total would be a hundred and forty-six thousand. The playground equipment with the wood fiber is seventy thousand seven hundred fifty-eight. And then these additional items, I added in the fencing, the Gaga pits, the tables and the benches, so the total of all those together is about sixteen thousand. So as you can see, like I said, the option one with the ported place rubber is double the price if we went with wood chips. So, that Bremer Grant, we're really, really hoping for, it goes up to two hundred thousand dollars, so I requested a hundred and sixty-three thousand, we'll see. But yeah, I, I guess, I'm, I'm very passionate about working here, and I saw, we saw a need and we just said, let's, let's do this, and we're completely on board. I just think our, not every kid likes to play basketball, not every kid likes to throw a ball around outside when you have the chance to go outside. There has to be other things, other ways to, to reach the kiddos that, you know, need to just spin, or need to swing, need that motion. And like I said, it's not just for our kids at the middle school, this is a community thing. If we talk about kids going to the Hammond Park that live over in Black Duck, that's quite a, that's quite a walk, we need something on this side of town. And as I've gone through this process, I've talked to a lot of people about how being a special ed para, I encourage the kids all the time, you can do this, you know, you can, you can write this paper, you can stand up in front and talk to everybody, and now I've had to do it. I'm like, it really gave me a, it was a humbling experience, because I felt like a kid again, I felt like I didn't want anybody to see my paper, I didn't, I didn't wanna have to get it proofread by somebody, but it's, I'm glad that we've done it. But, to show the kids that this was a, this is a big price tag, it's a big dream of ours, but if we keep working on it, we can do it. And get them out, get them outside to play, you know, shut those Chromebooks and turn off your phones and be outside and enjoy it.
Question that I'd ask for you is, are there any playgrounds in this area that have ported place rubber?
I know that schools that put it on, I've, I've been on it in Woodbury, I know Woodbury has it, but River Falls, that's what it comes in, yeah.
That new Triangels for.
The Triangels, yeah.
Okay, 'cause the one I've been on was down in Kenosha.
Okay.
It's, it's a wonderful surface to be on, but as you say, it's very expensive.
Yeah, he almost discouraged me, like, just like, you know, it's too expensive, that he, meaning you, the playground guy, Dan Lee, just kind of said, yeah, it's probably wood chips, and I was like, well, that's not, that's not reaching everybody in our, you know, in our community, that's not accessible for everybody, and he said, yeah, you're right, and I said, well, if I write a grant, what, what do you think, should I go for it? And he goes, yeah, I'd go for it, so when I wrote the grant, I tiered it just like I did that, you know? This would be our first choice, you know, this would reach the most people and, you know.
What other options besides the port rubber and wood chips are there for ground cover these days? And I know they've, they've gone with the ground rubber, but they're getting away from that.
Right, and that's, he said, you're not gaining, he goes, there's a, we have that, but it's, you're not gaining anything, really. Yeah.
We're just thinking of Greg, Greg, when we're thinking of that port rubber, so he doesn't have to get any more wood chips.
You gotta look at, you gotta look at your total cost over time, I mean, over ten years, port rubber is gonna stay in place. The, the neighborhood I grew up in, about thirty years ago did a port rubber, and it's still there. And, you know, and it's worn well, and it's very highly used. And, you know, we were one of the first ones in St. Paul, but it was heroic effort by a few people that brought it, so. First of all, DeeDee and Sarah, thank you, thank you, one, for being passionate about kids and passionate parents and passionate for the community. I have a couple of suggestions that may help, I don't know if we've talked to the village or the township.
I was gonna go there, so.
But, so there's, there's, you know, if it's truly a community park, there's that. I don't know if there's anything in our community, community education fund that from a board level that would just, I don't know if this qualifies, but could we look at anything from community education fund for it? And then the last comment is, I know St. Cray Electric has just recently taken over the USDA funding for Western Wisconsin, and I don't know if you saw the St. Cray Electric cooperative newsletter, it's low interest loans, the United Fire just got one for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, they pay it back over seven years at one percent. Now, what that does is it keeps the same dollars circulating within our communities. We pay a little bit of interest, but very low, and it puts time on your side. So while we're looking at getting something this year, it doesn't move the motivation of MVP or the community away, and is there a way for us to look at budget? Now, I don't know what all the requirements are, but there's sometimes those types of dollars out there on St. Cray Electric. You know, I don't know if it's Mark Pendergast or who you wanna talk to over there, but I know that they do have this USDA fund, I don't even know if this would qualify.
Okay.
But those, those are some things to maybe think about. I would hope that our village and town boards would see the value of this in the community. And, and really, we don't have a south park, no, no, no TV show reference there. No southerly located park in, in the Hammond Village.
And there are a lot of middle school students that live in Black Duck, so.
Yeah.
About five weeks ago, I met with Tony, and I presented, I presented that pitch to him. And I know at the last city council meeting, he did throw a pitch out to the city council. I don't think he's got an answer yet, but this is kind of our goal in regards to, I know a lot of meetings ago, this board talked about community partnerships and so forth. So, that's another thing I, I really pitched with Tony in regards to us doing this together to, to really help this, this part of town, but also help our kids. So I know, I know Tony brought it up, he hasn't got back to me with what the board is, is willing to release, I guess, for front anything, but I know Tony did.
But if we can present this as a truly ADA compliant space, the village might have some grants that they could write, that, that this would qualify for, where just a standard park wouldn't, so that might be an approach we wanna take with them too.
He was gonna work with the city engineer on the grants for the ADA park.
Okay.
So he said, he, he knew about the grants that would qualify for that, so Tony is also gonna work on that part of it.
And I know the guy who's the town chair, so. He's my brother.
And there's a flyer that I handed out to you, that I worked on that, thinking this will be what we can show parents, what you can say, there's a lot of common questions that I just kind of tried to answer briefly, so, and I'll, I think we're gonna print out a this picture and put it in the front of the school on like a little easel thing, so.
With the information.
With the information, yeah. Some parents are like, oh, some parents still haven't heard about it, as much as I feel like I talk about it. Maybe it's a smaller circle than I think, than I'm talking to, but.
And you're presenting it at the middle school, but are you presenting it at the elementary, because they're gonna be the beneficiaries of it?
And that's what, that kind of just, Leah Sire is, said, and she goes, you know, I feel like we gotta get our third and fourth graders on board, and I said, hey, even think about that, like that just, I was, I was so focused on this grant for such a long time that, and I wanted to get the, the, my questions answered before I put it out there, so. She said that she is working with their crew, I think she comes with the kindness club or something like that, to get, she's gonna do a bake sale with the kids and get that on board, but that's a great idea.
I'd recommend even pushing it further down. I mean, if, if you think about it, everyone that has a baby in this town can drive by here and see what the park's gonna be. Or they can see what the park's gonna be. So, you know, that, it's a twenty year cycle, not a, not the next four, or, or even kindergarteners, you know, it's, it's children.
And everyone that lives in this town or near area, it's a place to stop and play.
Okay, any other questions for DeeDee or Sarah?
I just really wanna say thank you, you know, DeeDee has Boy Scouts, Sarah's been involved with Girl Scouts forever, among many, many other things. But it's really Parent Panther Group and MVP that I've seen the two of you, but also DeeDee's son is one of the scouts that does all the football games, so they're, they're, they're part of one sixty-one that comes out and makes sure we have the flag on guard for all the football games and things like that, and I, as a board member, can't thank you enough. We talked about how do we engage in our community, and I think you two are absolutely the example that we wish we could multiply by, you know, two thousand others, and so thank you for bringing those folks in our community that do really make a difference and care for the kids.
I'll encourage more on board, hopefully.
Thanks.
Thank you, DeeDee, this is awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our financial reports.
Bank account balances as of December thirty-first, twenty seventeen, Citizens State checking, one hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred twelve dollars and twenty-four cents. Citizens State Money Market, one million seven hundred eleven thousand three hundred eighty dollars and forty-nine cents. Citizens Money Market Fund, forty-six, fifty dollars, fifty-seven cents. Citizens Money Market Suicide Prevention Fund, sixteen thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars, fifty-one cents. American Deposit Management Referendum Proceeds, four hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. For total bank account balances of two million three hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and forty-eight cents.
Okay. Any questions? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve the financial reports as presented? Ooh, second, I have a motion, David, second, John, accept the financial reports as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, which consists of approval of our meeting minutes for our December eleventh Wage and Benefits Meeting, board meeting minutes from December eleventh. Approval of our bimonthly bills for January two thousand eighteen. There are no resignations or retirements, approval of appointments and contract modifications, we've got death from body, seven hours high school special ed para, Carolyn Lent is a Science Olympiad mentor, Carissa Sharp is a middle school assistant cross-country coach for two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. And approval of the modica, curriculum modification requests for our students to enroll in full-time and part-time virtual ed courses, which consists of thirty-three part-time and one full-time, for a total of thirty-four modification requests at this time. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, a motion, John, second, Kate, approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is our student enrollment update.
The total number of students in seats has increased. Actually, there are two months worth in your packets, but just since last month, increased seven students, we're up to one thousand five ninety-nine. Also, our virtual charter school is up to seventy-six, continues to grow as predicted, it was at, I believe, sixty-seven just last month, and it was at forty-five a year ago today. And lastly, which this has a large effect on, our open enrollment in versus open enrollment out is a net plus eighty-six.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Okay. Do you know why our freight reduce increased so much, I mean, that's a big add.
Yes, they did a, a new calculation in December.
Okay.
The DPI, new some federal reconfiguring, yeah, all of a sudden, I think Elaine had about almost sixty new free reduced large direct certification, just in one month, it's just the way they, we can figure how they figure it.
Okay, any other questions, various to student enrollment? Okay, carrying on, we'll move on to the next item, key words. Move on to our student staff and community recognition. The one thing that we failed to mention in the convention was our two students who had artworks on display at the state convention. It's very wonderful. Student displays of the art from the students across the state, it's amazing, the pictures, artwork from our students are absolutely amazing. They've got much more talent than Oliver does. Wanna thank both of them for the display, so, John?
So the first recognition is to Jaclyn David, congratulations on your artwork titled My Ocean, My Art, being displayed at the twenty eighteen Joint Education Conference in Milwaukee. You represented St. Cray Central's vision and mission very well with your talent. Also to Sarah Nihus, congratulations on her artwork titled Childish Delusion, also being displayed at the twenty eighteen Joint Education Conference in Milwaukee, and representing our vision and mission very well with her talent. A recognition to Jordi Bremer, thank you for your leadership in submitting student artwork to the state education conference. Helping students receive recognition on a statewide level is aligned to our district vision and mission. A recognition to Greg Green, thank you for all the time, effort, and dedication in removing the large amounts of snow in the latest snowstorm, you are appreciated. And appreciation to Carl Oslund and Carol Bodisch and Matt and Billy Hawkins as well, for their role in removing the snow during the latest snowstorm. Truly, this is a team that really got our district back on its feet in a, in a quick. Truly, this is a team that really got our district back on its feet in a in a quick hurry. Uh and then a recognition to Kirk Soderberg, thank you for your presentation to the board regarding standards-based grading. Many questions were clarified and a good base was established for the change. So um thank you and recognition to those from the board this month.
Thank you all. Thanks, John. Okay, moving on to the next item. Just a presentation from our high school guidance counselor, Jeff Fern, on senior release.
Hi, just got my scholars here, Kogosovich, Ariana, you come on up here? Get their jackets on, cause pretty chilly out there. It's actually warm with the wind. Alright, so we're here uh representing our our seniors. This topic was brought up recently um as we're changing schedules for second semester and trying to find a purpose, uh meaningful, uh classes for our seniors. So, um my name's Mr. Fern High School Counselor, I got Ariana Ariana Karasco here. Uh ham royalty members, she's headed the state in dance, uh very highly qualified, Kogosovich here, brought us to state two years enrolled, so I'm surrounded uh by uh two, dance with the state two years enrolled too. Alright, moving forward, here's some background information. Before we get started here, I mean, this is basic knowledge, but um as far as the credits at the high school, just a reminder that our seniors uh to graduate need twenty-four credits. There's fifteen and a half required credits and then eight and a half of elective courses. Our kids take seven credits a year. So going into that senior year, they have twenty-one credits. Again, they need twenty-four to graduate. So um we'll get into the senior release later and what that would potentially look like, um and the why behind it. But just so you know, ninety-nine percent of our seniors have twenty-one credits going into the senior year and they're on track for graduation. Those who are not on track for graduation are in our HSEP program. So um that program, that's obviously drastically, so this senior release, we have all of our senior uh body. Here's a typical class schedule for seniors. Uh they have to take an English class their senior year. About eighty percent of our students have to post secondary education, so they are continuing to focus on the core areas. But what's required for them as seniors is listed uh on the slide, they have to take English and they have to fill their schedules up, they need six more classes. And by the time they're seniors, typically, they don't wanna sign up for six more classes, to say the least. Um so we're here to to discuss what are some potential options? These are more options for our kids who are in-house, that are not in the school to career program, or not participating in our youth options program. The kids who are taking classes here, they don't have enough time in their schedules to get out of the building. I'll say that doing youth options class, we need at least three class periods. They have to drive there, go to class, drive back. So minimum three class periods. What is senior release? In my vision, um I've been talking with some seniors, it would allow the seniors to study in the commons and or leave the and or leave the building for up to two class periods. I don't like to see this just at the beginning of the day or just at the end of the day because, as we'll see in a couple of examples here, um a student might I may say you have to take a class third hour, and they're coming to me and saying, Fern, I don't need to take a class third hour, and I don't wanna take a class that's offered third hour. I'm going to UW South, I'm going into business. Um an example would be, I don't wanna take small engines. I think we would all agree you could benefit from taking small engines, but these are young adults and they have to make decisions. And I also think that they should be faced with experiences so they have flexibility and freedom, because in six months their parents are gonna drop them off at college, and now they have to make all these decisions. So they don't wanna take a class third hour, they could choose, am I gonna sit in the commons, am I gonna study? Am I gonna go up to Bob and Steve's? Am I am I gonna run home? Um what are my options? So um no credit would be awarded for this, um this is simply just time for them, um for themselves. And I think that they've earned it by doing everything that we've asked of them in the previous three years. I talked about the why a little bit, provide choice, freedom, flexibility. I want meaningful schedules for seniors. You know, I don't think it does the teachers or the other kids in the class any good when some of our students aren't focused, they're off task, they know they don't need the class. There's not a ton of motivation to to turn the work in. And also, we have underclassmen who wanna take some of these courses, but seniors have preference over those students, and we can open seats up. We've actually seen that happen um at the start of second semester, especially during our seventh hour class period, where I have literally sat with students and said, look, I'm not gonna place you in a class, I'm gonna put you in a study hall in the library, but we can't overpopulate that area because that needs to be a place where kids go and they study. So um and it's been awesome because we've been able to have some underclassmen take some courses that they really wanna get into at senior school. Would be eligible, seniors who are mathematically on track to graduate. I can't say that this is uh more beneficial for somebody who had a three-point-oh GPA over somebody who had a two-point-oh GPA. They all have their own stories, they're on track to graduate, I think they should be eligible for the program. They need their parents' approval um to enroll in this program, um if you okay like the off-campus um situation. But with the off-campus, it doesn't um scare me uh that much, simply because of the youth options that we have in our district. We have kids leaving all the time, going to and from school, we have kids going to the elementary, middle school, our teacher assistant programs. Again, and I think it's good for our kids to be um put in those situations where they have to make choices. The roads are icy today, maybe I'm not gonna drive up to um the gas station, it's negative twenty-five degrees, not a good idea. We do serve the right, obviously, to pull a student from this program if they have poor attendance. So if they were to have senior release third hour and they're not showing up to uh uh fourth hour on time, they're not back in the building, we could pull them from that, if they have missing work, if they have behavioral issues. It's a privilege to be out of the building or not in class. I talked about some other options, um we do have our students get out of the building their senior year, uh the school to career program. A lot of these students, though, they wanna take at least five classes, they don't have time for a job, they're in extracurricular activities, the arts, um the athletics. We talked about our early college credit program, youth options. And then I am allowing the study hall situation right now, but that's gonna spread like wildfire once kids understand that I'm okay in that. But it's hard for me to sit across my desk from a senior who's taking three AP courses, a couple elective classes in the form that student, no, you have to go take the large animal science class, and you have no interest in animals. Again, we can all learn something from a class, I think we would agree, um but is that meaningful for that student? Just a couple of examples of some schedules for students to show that some of our kids are out of the building for other programs. Ariana's gonna talk about her situation, um what her schedule looks like.
Okay, so second hour, I have study hall right now, but I only have study hall because the classes that are offered are either classes for underclassmen like language or science or something like that, or graphic design, which I don't really have any interest in, because my psychology is a little early.
And she's, I mean, what I would like to point out here too is, um she's an IDS assistant a couple hours, she wants to potentially work with that that population, but she's also taking a couple advanced placement courses, which are college-level classes. She's in Spanish four, and she's a pre-calculus student, which is, I would consider to be an upper, upper, upper level math class, um at least in my world. She also has twenty-eight credits, so.
And youth options won't work.
Right.
I couldn't leave like in the beginning of the day or the end of the day. And AP psychology and AP geography are in the beginning and end of the day, so there wouldn't be a time till like three, four days.
And you're a practice.
What time do you get to go?
I try guys practicing morning and weightlifting after school.
So you get to school at five forty-five AM, right?
Yeah.
So again, focusing on the course, taking meaningful classes, for her, we'd simply ask one class period. She has a freedom to do her study in the commons, or she can leave. Kogosovich?
Alright, so my situation is that I have study all first hour, and as an athlete, in my opinion, kinda getting a little extra more sleep or doing the homework that I have overnight because I usually am late, um would be very beneficial, beneficial to me, and uh and my preferred study after uh high school is I wanna go into marketing. And you know, marketing, you gotta have a lot of talking and a lot of experience in that situation and being able to present yourself in front of people. And uh like the classes I'm doing right now, like communication theory, debating and stuff, which is a great class for me as talking to other people. And uh individual sports, I love that class, you know, I love sports in general. Unfortunately, I know I'm doing a sport in the winter, cause I hurt myself last time, so not gonna do that again, but usually I am a free sport athlete, so I know what it's like to, for Ariana, to be in that situation where you are staying late at school and you are waking up really early. So, I mean, this would be very beneficial to this year's senior class for like later on in the semester or something like that, and the upcoming years, upcoming years senior class as well.
And uh we just did course registration for our juniors. Our current junior's going to be senior next year. Our junior's probably the best class academically that we've had um at St. Troy Central, and it was really, really difficult for them to select seven classes next year. Now, a lot of them are taking upper level classes, but they don't wanna take seven different classes. That's a lot asking for our students, I even talked to the administration, try going to seven different meetings a day, having to be prepared when you're graduating, and see what that would be like, okay? So um not taking it to that extreme, but simply looking for, um what we would like to see is two class periods for our seniors to enroll in the senior release, if they're mathematically on track to graduate, if they don't have any attendance and behavioral issues. I can talk about how this could impact uh current classes. We haven't looked at every single elective course, but the courses that I was concerned about, we have a business math class that's offered to our juniors and seniors. One class does have six seniors, um however, several of those seniors need that class to graduate, so they cannot drop it. Several other elective classes we're looking at had one or two students uh not in that class. And not saying that those kids wanna take advantage of senior release. But as we talked to our staff on Wednesday about the feedback that we did tonight, that is something that we wanna go to staff, is how would this impact your current classes? We would reserve the right to say, you cannot do that with business math. Correct, yep. And in having um those one-on-one conversations, if the kid's in AP psychology, wants to drop AP psychology to be in senior release, I know, having that conversation, how does that impact your future? This is a class that potentially could save you a thousand dollars in a class that you have to take in college. So as counselors, obviously, having that one-on-one conversation, if it really doesn't make sense, not the right situation.
Okay, go ahead, John.
So a senior release, you sign up for that period? Or is it that I now have choice? So, I mean, I I Joe and I have had this conversation, it's a great example in my mind to you. Well, he did, but he's he's gonna take a math, two sciences, human geography, and his English class. So he has five classes. It's like, Dad, you know, I'm taking two sciences and a tough math, and he knows he needs to take those based on the college visits he's done. So, you know, he's not gonna drop chemistry for senior release.
Right.
But right now, that sets him up for, what, two study halls or?
Yeah, two, correct.
Two study halls, so does that mean he can take two senior releases or?
Yeah, two class periods wherever it fits in his schedule, so if it's third hour and seventh hour, wherever it fits for the student.
Okay, but he doesn't have, we're not kicking the kids out and saying, you gotta leave this school, they give them the choice. So if if he wants to use his senior release time and get his weightlifting workout in during that time, can they do that?
If he's supervised. We have two rates provisioned, yeah, I don't know if possible.
Okay, um so i- it's just where it fits in their schedules.
Correct, yeah.
And uh the predecessor to that is, it's gotta make sense, so you know Joe wants to go to a four-year college in in health services, so we're not gonna say, okay, skip your chemistry.
Have we taken anatomy and physiology, have we taken your chemistry?
And there's that, there is the parent approval part.
Well, Joe's gonna be eighteen, so I don't get to, so do I approve it as a parent, or does he get to approve himself?
I would highly encourage that the parent.
Well, we've had other discussions about if you wanna act eighteen, there's lots of things that come.
Unless he's emancipated, you have, you can tell no.
Okay.
And I assume he's not emancipated.
And then does does our liability change? You know, so there's, to me, a difference if I have a destination. Um and I like this idea of, you know, you gotta give kids that opportunity to go out and explore their independence, right? And I'd rather have them do it in the community than before we send them a thousand miles away to college and have them fall off the cliff. But does that change our liability? If I have youth options at destination, we think they're driving to River Falls, taking their class and driving back, we're assuming that. Youth options, I don't know, I can go to BP one day, I can try and make it to Rich, New Richmond back another day and really drive fast, you know? It to me, it just feels different, and I don't think we can legislate that, but I'd be concerned, does that change our premise liability at all?
The the parent approval form covers that, we're always, there's always inherent liability.
They have, um, schools that have open campuses, their kids can leave for lunch.
Yeah.
In Maryland, we had junior and senior release.
I I like the idea, for all the reasons, flexibility, independent choice, and um i- it's a different level of keeping students engaged in their own learning plan.
I'll tell you that when we went to the ninth hour study hall where if they have a B-plus average, and they have freedom ninth hour, they're in the commons, they go to the library, they go to the gym, we had two hundred students that had freedom at the same time, and talked to his staff um that likes to have control.
And it worked.
Understand that, and it worked.
Right.
Flaws, and I encourage any of you to walk in ninth hour, not the day before holiday break or spring break. It's uh pretty amazing to see these kids. Um it's a pretty quiet environment, actually. They're studying, they're working, they're they're doing what benefits them. It's meaningful and purposeful.
And and Jeff, I think you're exactly right, because if we all live in this absolute confined bubble of someone always telling me what to do, in September, if my freshman year of college comes, then what?
You have two freshman years, I did that.
I tell you, when our kids are dropping out of college because they're not prepared, they're dropping out of college because they don't know how to deal with freedom. And they have a choice, and we talked about as parents, when you draft your kids off, I can't imagine what it's like knowing that, oh my God, they're making all their decisions starting now. It's horrible.
Couple of questions for the sake of discussion. Um how would this fit in the big picture of what we're gonna be talking about later in the agenda with staffing and class sizes and such? Do you see this possibly potentially um take a little pressure on of those classes, staffing discussion?
Absolutely, but I see other kids being able to enroll in courses, popular courses at our school. So example would be advanced foods, very popular class, we get some kids to, some seniors that don't wanna take the class, opens the spots up for some sophomores and juniors. So I don't know if it's gonna fix, I mean, we would have to run the program, um but it's not gonna hurt, that's for sure. But I wanna go to our staff with numbers, so if I teach horticulture, I know that I'm still gonna have a class, and how that would affect. Well, I ran the list and there's two seniors in that class of twenty. So down to VT isn't necessarily a bad thing for a class.
Now I ask the question that some people might have, or some people in the community might have, well, gosh, ninety-nine percent of our students are on track, they only need to take one class, why don't we just up the graduation requirements? How do we respond to that?
Well, I think uh we require kids to take to take seven classes a year. I know forty years ago, when I was going through the system, you could actually take six classes a year because if you pass up a class or mathematically on track to graduate. We require kids to take seven because we didn't have study halls during the day, because we had our common study halls on the power. So, I mean, if you look at our credit requirements, they're very similar um to local school districts. I can check with the middle board, but twenty-four, I don't know if anybody has higher requirements.
And I I would say the big difference is they're they're taking seven, the seven classes, that's a big deal.
Right. And we just, we don't have staffing to hold study halls during the day. I mean, I'm currently doing it a little bit on a case-to-case, by a case-per-case basis, sending kids to the library. But again, if those are just seniors, they're not necessarily there for the right reasons. You know, I want that to be a quiet environment for other kids that are in there, just some of our virtual kids.
Yeah, we set up graduation requirements for all, so we gotta have some margin there for students that might potentially fail and still catch up.
Our kids are still focusing on the course. I I should run a report to see what's the average credit total for each graduate, but our kids are still taking classes senior year, focusing on the course, preparing for college. It's just not simply wanting to take a class or two. And I talk a lot about finding a balance in mental health, but some kids need that. I mean, I talk with kids every day. When they're getting there at five forty-five in the morning and leaving at nine o'clock at night and taking several AP courses and whatnot, you know, mental health is important, and some of that is just having a break in your day. You know, mental health is important, and some of that is just having a break in your day.
So, have we looked at, and you said, we don't have staffing for study hall in the middle of the day? But, is that our students' challenge or is that our challenge? So, does it, would it help our students, mental health, some of that sophomore year, junior year craziness? If they're not taking seven classes, what if they were taking six instead of seven? And if there, there's some tough classes that are, are students are taking sophomore and junior year.
Especially the junior, I think is the most difficult year of high school. So, to provide some margin there would be helpful. But right now, where we're at, we can place kids in the uh, in the library right now. That's, that's where we could potentially place kids. And again, we use that area for, for different reasons too with our virtual students and whatnot. It would be helpful if we had like a classroom or even like a lecture hall area where kids could go for a study hall.
So, you'll work with students and families on appropriate learning levels? If, if there's a junior that should be taking six classes for their best learning capacity, you'll work with that student?
We currently are, yeah. So, we do actually.
But it's not, it's not systemic, Jeff.
Don't put it on your Snapchat stories, but yes, we do have uh, we do have current juniors that are taking six courses.
Where's the rule that you have to take seven classes? There is a rule. I actually think, I actually think creating margin is. We require kids to take seven classes?
We, we, we do because we don't, we don't offer study halls, I believe, like we just like, we changed the system. I think we went to a common study hall ninth hour. Teachers weren't able to have a study hall during the day, correct? So, like if I was a classroom teacher, I was teaching five classes and then one of my classes was a study hall. Six classes?
Seven was their study hall.
Even if your study hall, third hour, um, those who might have their study hall fourth hour, now they all have the same hour.
So, the, so the trade-off was Glenn brings in the ninth hour study hall, now all teachers are available to help all kids with whatever they need. Which is really smart, as opposed to, I need you as my teacher, you're teaching while I have a study hall, so it just doesn't match up.
The difference is, students used to take two study halls, not all, not even that many. Most of them took seven classes.
Yeah, you have to get the exception to only take one or none.
So, I, I'm, think the release is fine. I quit high school after Christmas and went to college. I mean, I had enough credits and I was done and. Or they didn't have, they didn't have any, then I. I got into college and had to pay tuition and didn't have a high school diploma and. Got it in May when everybody else graduated from high school. So, I think this is great. I, we need to let these kids control their own education. This is, they'll do just fine.
I guess the question that I would have at this point, are there interests in electives? That we're not offering that their, their student interest in? That's something that we need more offerings for electives or different offerings for electives?
I mean, I, I don't have an answer for that. I mean, I think we could hold our kids and ask our kids, you know, what are some courses?
Think that would be worthwhile.
Yeah, more classes.
I would say, of course, we do, but that doesn't change this conversation at all.
But, but still. Yeah, when we're trying to provide margin, some of these kids are just, they, they have a lot on their plate too. And they're like, I just, I need an hour for myself, you know what I mean? But I get the whole, um, hour more classes that we could offer. I'm sure there is. I'd like to see classes that we can offer that we could at least include, you know, all the students in a class. And we've talked about some classes we could offer, but if you only give forward by students, it'd be a waste of our time.
It's, it's not necessarily taking more classes, maybe different classes that are of interest to them.
That, that, that's a, yeah, that's a slippery slope, but yeah, that's something we talk about all the time. And actually, just organically, the kids will tell us by what they sign up for. We've offered energy science, environmental science, kids just don't sign up for it. So, we're trying to talk about doing some sort of integrated science where they, where incorporates that type of stuff too. But you don't call it that. And it just would be like a, a part of it rather than all of it, so.
Now, is the best way to go about that to get some representatives from kids from each grade and figure out? What are we offering and what are we not offering?
The diff, the difficulty is, you could ask fifty kids and you'll get fifty different answers. And that's the struggle with public education department, we're trying to be everything for everybody and we just, there's not enough time in the day. There's not enough people, there's not enough all that, so.
Well, that, that comes into prioritization.
That's also the other nice thing, Howard, how many alternate uh.
Virtuals.
Virtual changes did you have tonight, thirty-four? Those are kids that are saying, I don't wanna take what's offered here, but there's a virtual course, I wanna try that. And that's preparing them for what they're gonna see out there too. And, you know, that's just one month of, you know, I think, Jeff, hundred kids?
Yeah, last year we had a court, our student body was enrolled.
At least one.
Yeah, so, that's a pretty nice option.
I don't mean to be impertinent, but does the board have to, is this a board decision? I mean, you went to a ninth hour study hall and didn't ask us about it. So, why do we need to decide? Stretching it to where they could go off campus, that, I mean, you could care less if they're in a study hall in the library.
And that still may or may not be a board level. I appreciate that, that, the, the fact that you've come to us, but sometimes, you know. I don't know if you need our blessing or if you need a vote or if you need whatever, but.
Since it's a discussion item, I don't think we're gonna necessarily.
But I don't know that there's anything to vote on.
I think we say thank you for sharing and.
Ideas that you guys have, and I mean, I would, I guess echo what Jeff is saying is, I mean, I like it, I think it's a good idea. And I, I certainly think as the kids definitely get older and as they get past just one or two AP courses. And they're full on into college, they need to know how to manage their own time, they need to know that they gotta just take a break once in a while. Hit the vending machine, sit outside and stare at a tree, you know, whatever it is. And I think this is a good way to kind of introduce them to it, you know, I mean, I kind of joked about, you know, I had two freshman years, but that was part of it. I went to college, mom and dad were gone, and there was other things to do. And I was free, I could make all my own choices. What do I do? Anything I want. Yeah, I mean, except for regularly attending classes. And, and it's a good, good way, I think, for them to kind of get introduced to that. You're in charge of your life a little bit more here, but I like the behind-the-scenes control, the parents are involved because they have to approve it. And uh, you know, they're limited as to how much they can just take off, you know, it's not, I'm gone half the day, just doing whatever I want. So, I mean, there is some behind-the-scenes control or filtering maybe of, of it, which I think is good. Because even at their age, they're doing a little bit of that, yes.
And I think it's helpful for us to, you know, to control some of those because we're struggling with the freedom. Like, I'm not getting back on time, you know, I'm not using that time wisely, I'm getting behind in my classes. So, we can help control that and monitor that now before they're paying sixty thousand dollars.
Requires a good level of communication from all of the teachers, all the, all of the staff, that they can say, hey. Cole must have fallen asleep in his car because he didn't come back on time, pull it from him, and maybe it's for a day or a week or whatever, but.
You hear that?
Major problem with it, so.
Jeff, for being here, but Ariana and Cole, your busy schedules, taking the time to come out tonight and advocate. Not only for yourselves, but especially it's gonna impact the future seniors and student body in the world, so.
Future classes, I told them through SEC, create school history.
So, we're gonna call it the class, you know, Gostovich.
Yep. The, yeah, Ariana Cole Senior Release Rule is what we're gonna call it.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to the next item, which is um consideration of the administrative contract extensions for two thousand nineteen twenty. We all know administrators are on a. One-year rollover on administrative contracts. Something that we've, over the years, taken formal action on, uh, to either approve or dis, disapprove of administrative contracts. You have recommendations?
Yes, my recommendation that the board consider uh extending the administrators' contracts for nineteen twenty, all, all nine.
So, with that, uh.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Scott, second David, to approve uh. Rollover for the administrative contracts uh for two thousand nineteen twenty, school year, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is uh determining the number of spaces available for special education students for open enrollment purposes for two thousand eighteen nineteen.
Well, we met as a team, um, the administrators and the virtual um. Virtual education coordinators, um, and we have decided that we would like to um leave the special education's. Seats um open for next year, not making any limitations on them. We believe that we are going to have, we do have lots of applicants um on a regular basis. For special education students in virtual ed. And if we are able to get some additional hours for special education staffing. For that uh program, we believe we'll be able to serve their needs. So, we're thinking that for next year, we're going to not limit the enrollment numbers, the seat limitations.
And again, the two are basically tied together, and um by limiting in it, it really handcuffed us in our ability to accept. Students in during the open enrollment window all the way uh to actually July first. So, we wanted to uh recommend something that would be uh, that would not hinder us in accepting students. On the other hand, when we asked the question, um, you know, uh, can this really um, can there be some high costs? Associated with this? So, there are some uh measures that we still are allowed to take it on a case-by-case basis. And look at the IEPs before we make a decision and see whether we're able to meet their needs or not. And just because we're not gonna limit it, doesn't mean that we can't work with families and say, we can't meet your needs, sorry. Um, we're gonna have to deny your open enrollment application. Did I, is that the gist of it?
Okay.
So, I have a question. So, if you open enroll a special ed student into the district, does that district that they come from not have to pay?
They do, twelve thousand dollars is what that is.
It's a set limit.
Correct, it's a flat fee.
Yeah, but we may have twenty-eight thousand dollars in cost.
Correct, so, let's say they're um, they wanna enroll in a virtual uh charter school and they live in Racine. And they have um one-to-one in-person requirement in their IEP, um, it says, we're gonna meet weekly. Well, again, what's one-to-one look like? Um, could we do it to um Google Hangout perhaps? But if, if it's like in-person, we're like, we, we, we can't do that, that's not feasible, but, you know, so then we'd say, we can't do that and deny that. Whereas, I'll turn over to you, Pat, for better examples. There are some that are very feasible.
Right, but if a student um applies and needs services that we do not have. We are going to deny that application, we do not have to accept that child if we don't even have those services available. So, that kind of helps us with not having a huge cost come to us, okay?
But some are speech language, you know, eas- easily, um, we can easily meet those needs and have the resources to do that. So, we would accept that student in that case.
And Pat, I think you gave me the example before about if they wanna be in-house, but we aren't able to. We can offer them virtual as an al, as an alternative.
Exactly.
And that might allow us to accept them on one level, but, but not be able to deal with or handle it on another level.
Exactly. When we accept kids, uh, we are accepting them in the district. And then, for special ed kids, we make the recommendation of whether it's going to be in seats in school or virtual.
And the parent still has choice in that. If they believe that meets their family need.
And we have a plan, you know, moving forward as that enrollment grows, how we would uh meet those staffing needs. For instance, you know, we could utilize our current staff to do like we already do with a virtual charter school or virtual education students. You know, ten hours a week or whatever, that they can do evenings and weekends and such. And then, at some point, if it continues to grow, there's a, there's a um, you know, a point where we might have to hire a full-time person or whatever. But, just like any other staffing, we have a plan as enrollment grows.
Okay, so we need a formal motion on this. Do we have language around what the motion would be?
I, we accept this administration's recommendation that we leave unlimited our open enrollment for special ed.
Okay, motion Jeff, second David. Everybody understands the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Uh, next item is determining the number of spaces available for regular education students for open enrollment purposes for two thousand eighteen nineteen.
We have the same recommendation.
Okay, yeah, motion Jeff, second David. Any further discussion on the mo, motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the uh eighteen nineteen school calendar. I talked to Tim earlier, I think we would like to table that for now. I think there's some changes in the calendar that the administration wants to discuss before they bring it back to formal approval, so.
We should be able to bring it back next week after admin meeting tomorrow, just um. Homecoming, I have the hope, ideal homecoming day fell on a PD day with no school, which is. So, we'll uh, we'll uh hopefully get uh that straightened out tomorrow and bring it back next Monday. And we'll just do summer school at the same time.
Okay, so we will table the next uh two items. Next is the update on the long-term capital improvement, and I talked to Tim earlier. Without Jen here tonight, we'd like to table that also, so. Okay, is there any other business you need to bring up at this point? Okay, carrying none, we have important dates coming up. February fifth, next Monday, we'll have our special board uh. Learning and special meeting here, six-thirty at the district office. February nineteenth is the uh next regular scheduled uh board meeting, seven o'clock here in the district office. March twenty-first, we have uh scheduled for the CS eleven joint board education pack meeting. Turtle Lake, uh keynote speaker is gonna be Leroy Butler, uh former Green Bay Packers. So, supposed to be entertaining. So, if, if you're interested in attending that, get ahold of Ben, and she can make uh arrangements uh for the dinner. I plan on going, so. Sign me up, I don't know if there's anybody else. I guess the other date that we'll have to remember is uh March twentieth. We've set the uh next community meeting on uh standards grading.
Howard D., oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, the wage and benefit meeting scheduled for last week did not happen because of the snowstorm, so we are working on a uh new date for that as well. We'll put that on the calendar when it's uh, okay.
I am flying back on Monday, so I won't be at that meeting. My plane arrives at ten-thirty, so unless you have a long meeting.
We'll text.
We don't have a meeting that goes to ten-thirty, I'd probably be up for a lunch mob. So, Pat?
Um, Wednesday, February seventh, we are having a parent university at the elementary school. From six-thirty until eight o'clock. Parent university is a time for parents to get together and hear a guest speaker talk about um. Talk about, um, topic of interest, and we sent out a, uh, survey to parents of special education students. And got their feedback on topics that they would like to have speakers on, and the top vote getter was on enhancing. Social skills for children in home and community settings, so that's what we are going to have our speaker. Talking about on February seventh, our speaker is Jess Messinski. Who is a school psychologist in the Ellsworth School District, so we're welcome to come.
Okay, are there any other, uh, dates that we need to discuss at this point? Okay, hearing none, our next item is to go into closed session per Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five, one C. Considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data on any, of any public employee over which the governmental body is. Jurisdiction or exercises responsibilities, it's a discussion regarding current and future staffing.
Second.
The motion is second.
Aye.
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 Okay. Uh, then let's take a five-minute recess and we will reconvene. After that.
I couldn't find a form, so, the receipts and I tally them on a sheet.
So, Joe's very interested in.
Oh, I'm sure.
The board said no. And I just texted, problem.
I'm just gonna second.
I figured I've left him hanging, but I'm gonna say, no problem and close.
That's what you said you were not gonna be.
I think you should keep it going.
So, wage and benefit typically one up against one, you're gone next Monday, I'm gone that one day.
To Joe, you?
No, to any, to any of these.
Wage and benefit, so she's gone, he's gonna be gone February nineteenth, he's gonna be gone February fifth, fifth.
And I'm gone the nineteenth, twenty, yes, the twenty-first.
They do, I believe.